Well, whatever. It's good.
All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the April 8th County Council Meeting. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Let's start off with the Auditor's Financial Report. Jennifer?
Good morning. We started the general fund with beginning net balance of $7,521,557. We've granted appropriations in the amount of $35,674. We haven't had any miscellaneous expenditures to date, so that leaves us with $7,485,883 available for appropriation. Requests on this agenda total $22,562. I think at maybe the next month or so, we should probably consider the seven and a half million and perhaps looking at self-insurance. When I get to that point, Sadie has a presentation this morning just to talk about health insurance. Revenue, we are sitting at a collection rate of, if you disregard property taxes because of the timing, 21.7% collected. I don't have anything specific to point out there. And then on the fund balance report, the fund I would be referring to for self-insurance would be 4710, and that balance is down to around $4 million, which means we have depleted $3 million a year for the past two years. So again, I'm going to turn it over to Sadie here for a moment to talk about that.
Good morning. So what I have here is just a little bit of an overview without giving away too much information about what's going on. So the first slide here is our 2024 year in review. So when I looked at these, I looked at the last five years. It's typical for a health plan, every three to four years, you're going to have a really bad one or two years. We're in the thick of our really bad one or two years right now. So 2024, our Anthem expenditure was $11.7 million. VERTA is a wellness program. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a bit. ElectRx, we had a really bad year last year. There were some drugs being covered that we didn't want covered. We were able to put a stop to that, but unfortunately it did cost us almost a million dollars. Hendrix is Ortho Centers of Excellence. It was heavily utilized last year. Great turnout for our employees, and it does save us a lot, but it was the biggest year we've ever seen for that. Verus is our stock loss carrier, so when Anthem's high, Verus is going to be high. So ultimately, 2024 put us at $15.1 million. Our proactive recap, so this is what, these are the numbers we get from reporting almost at the end of the year. So you'll see that the number, the 2024 number I just showed you is a little bit off from this. That's because their reports were ran before we had our final bills. So the service savings, what it would have cost us for outside care versus going to the clinic was $1.1 million. Chronic conditions, so what it would cost us to manage chronic conditions elsewhere would have been $481,000. And the program cost us, what we paid, $926,000. So that gives us a net savings of $669,000. There's also some savings that we can't really calculate. This is a huge retention program for us, and it's a huge, I mean, we recruit and retain off of our clinic. We have great providers there with rave reviews every year. So on to 2025. So far, first quarter expenditures, Anthem is sitting at $3.1 million. March alone was $1.7. Hendrix, we're at $58,000, so we're utilizing it quite a bit again this year. And Verus is at $208,000. So so far, we're already at $3.9. So the 2025 projection, this is based off, again, I looked at the last five years. I went off of what our current risk is, what I know about our health plan and our members. So we're looking at our spend for Anthem this year to be $12.7 million. VERTA doesn't change because we have canceled our VERTA contract. We're not seeing any return on investment, and we haven't. So Dr. Kengary and I had a brief conversation about coming up with a different wellness plan that she can assist with. This is geared towards type 1 diabetes. That is in our top five health conditions, so we're not seeing any return on investment from Verus or VERTA at all. Hendrix, I guesstimated, sorry, I guesstimated on this one. I don't anticipate that we're going to have as much as we had last year. $70,000 was a rough guess. The average over the last five was $48,000, and we already surpassed that. So $70,000 was a good in-between. And Verus, looking at $832,000. So we're going to, we probably will hit $15 million again this year. Some statistics to go over with you. We have 745 full-time and regular part-time employees. Those are benefit-eligible. That's a February 2025 number. 251 are enrolled as employee only, 118 as employee spouse, 69 as employee children, and 219 as family. That puts us as about 1,500 total people are insured under typically county's health plan. So the total of 657 employees enrolled, that's an 88% enrollment, which is pretty unheard of, honestly. It shows you how rich that our plan is. So some high claims, so the measurement period is 12 months. So the last reporting we have is from February 2024 to March of 2025. So 24 members currently have over $75,000 in claims. They hit their specific deductible at $175,000. That's when Verus comes in, kind of like car insurance is how it's easy to look at. You hit your deductible, then there's a percentage. It's the same way for us as the employer. Only six of the 24 are diagnosed as cancer, and the top five health conditions have reached excess of $3.88 million in claims. So we'll have bad years. And looking at the last five, it was time for us to have one or two bad years. I would expect for '26 and '27 to be able to rebuild 4710. But again, you don't know. You just don't know what people are going to go through. We've got to continue to monitor it, offer support and resources. Between our office and the clinic, we do that to the extent that the employees are comfortable. Continue managing care and be good stewards of our bodies and our health plan. Utilization of Hendrix Ascension and MedZone help our claims and plan overall. If those claims were in our health plan, we would see 200% uptick. We have contracts that allow us to pay less than what an average provider would charge for those. And as I said, VERTA hasn't proved to be a good return on investment, so we'll start to seek other, and that will save about roughly $60,000, which is a drop in the hat right now, but in the end, we'll find something better.
Questions?
Do we see a correlation with this and the age of our workforce? Is that part of it as well?
Yes, I did look up that data. There is a specific age bracket that's driving the majority of the claims.
But is our overall age of the workforce getting older, or is it staying stable?
Actually, it's a pretty good mix.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I guess when we think about our premiums and what we as a county pay and what our employees pay, do you anticipate an increase this year? I mean, for next year, I should say.
Yeah, it's something that we need to look at. Our premiums, employee-facing premiums and employer, what we're contributing to 4710 have not increased in 10 years. The cost has increased over 10 years. It would be naive to think otherwise. So it is, it is time for some form of increase. What that looks like yet, we're just not sure. We have a meeting later today. We've talked with our broker about what we should be looking at. They agree that we are one of the richest health plans that they have. As far as what our employees are afforded and what they pay premium-wise, you're not going to get this kind of coverage. It's, you can compare it to a union plan. That's as close as we are to a rich benefit.
Any other questions?
Would you say that part of the retention of employees and attracting quality employees is the healthcare plan?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. When you look at the total package, for example, what it costs to insure a family, if you consider a four-person family, it costs us $28,000 roughly a year. So if you add that into the overall package, your salary plus that, that's not including taxes or per for anything as such, it's $28,000 added benefit to an employee.
So it's something to keep in mind of, that it is a valuable part of it?
Yes.
Even though we know salaries aren't as high as we'd love to pay, but it's the whole package?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Jennifer?
I do not.
All right. Okay, thank you. Yedira?
Good morning.
Good morning.
In front of you, you have February's account balance, and we ended the month of February with $174,597,299, with a total interest of $538,967.64. And the rate, the average interest rate and the weighted average interest rate for February was 4.59%. For the month of March, the account balance for the end of the month was $172,514,329.35. And the total interest for March was $525,287.94. And the rate continued to stay at 4.59%. To date, the general fund has received $994,215.4 of the total interest. And with 25% of the year lapsed, we're sitting at 20% of our original forecasted budget. We are starting, we just mailed property tax statements on Friday, so you should be receiving those, and they are due May 12th.
Yedira, the last three months, the average interest rate was, has been the same. Have you been hearing anything of any changes coming about?
No, I mean, the market is pretty chaotic right now. We don't know what's going to happen with interest rate. Feds, at the beginning of the year, I think we've said that they will, they think one or two drops this year at the end of the year, most likely, but that was at the beginning of the year, and things have changed since then. I don't know what rates are going to look like.
Okay, thank you. Hey, any questions for Yedira? All right, thank you. All right, public comment on any agenda items. Hearing none, let's move forward with consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in place with Councilman Murray, second with Councilman Basham. Any discussion questions? Hearing none, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Additional appropriations.
Make a motion, we approve the 4D Commissioner additional appropriation in the amount of $22,562.
Second.
I have a motion in place, Councilman Murray, second, Councilman Carson. Any discussion?
This is for the approval of moving the 4D Commissioner from part-time to full-time and just allocating the funds associated with that, that we discussed at the last meeting.
I believe this is effective '7, '1. This amount would account for the rest of the year after '7, '1. Is that correct? That the position was applicable July 1st?
Yeah, that's what we had discussed before. Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from council? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Prosecutor's user fees.
I make a motion to approve the prosecutor user fee fund appropriation for $50,000.
Second.
I have a motion in place from Councilwoman Dolam, second from Councilman Richard. Good morning.
Can you help us with professional services? I think you're all aware of that the last year, year and a half, we've had, not necessarily, we had a few murders, but those murders included multiple co-defendants. We're about halfway through that cycle. The Kokomo, we call them the Kokomo Five, the five individuals who came over here and committed a homicide. That last trial was concluded two weeks ago, but we still have about seven or eight cases to go that are on the calendar for this year. So I anticipate just not, luckily ours comes from our non-tax revenue fund, but I'm pretty sure public defenders are going to be over here asking for more funds for those cases too. Just a heads up.
Any comments or questions from council?
Can you just give a summary, like what those funds will be used for?
Professional services include anything we need to make in litigation expenses. It could be for, we have a couple cases where there's the issue of insanity, so we hire our own psychiatrist, psychologist to review records. It could be to hire an outside expert in any case. It could be for our own interpreters, because interpreters the court uses are for the court. So sometimes we like having our own, so we understand what's being said too, or to make sure the interpreter is accurate. Interpreters in depositions is an expense you don't usually see. It could be outside legal expenses for forfeiture, literally anything that we contract out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Pat. All right, Tima?
I'll make a motion that we approve, Tima Hazard Morgan Fund 4940 appropriations amount of $40,000.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray.
Morning.
This is our annual amount that we receive for our outdoor warning sirens. It's just repair and maintenance on them.
Any questions or comments from council?
'Tis the season, all right.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Community Corrections Donation Fund.
Make a motion, we approve Community Corrections Donation Fund 4124 appropriation in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
Good morning. Kena and Katie are both out, huh?
Hold on just a second. I have a motion in place from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Vernon. All right, discussion, go ahead.
Good morning. Kena and Katie are both out. So those of you that don't know me, I'm Kim Wagner, I'm the office manager. This grant was, gave to, sent to us from the United Way under our previous administration. It was actually supposed to be spent by the end of 2023, and I reached out to the United Way and asked for an extension, so they gave us until December of 2025. These funds are going to be used for our New Leaf Wellness. Half of the grant will be used for, like transportation is a big barrier for a lot of our participants, so it'll be used for like bus passes, taxis, gas cards, that kind of thing. And the other half will be for continued gym management to reward positive behavior when positive behavior is being seen. So that will be in the purchase of gift cards, prizes, meals, that kind of things to award the participants for positive behavior.
Any comments, discussion from council?
Thank you for that explanation, that helps.
You're welcome.
And thank you, United Way, to let us extend that to the end of this year.
Yes.
It's really great. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Highway Motor Vehicle Highway Fund 1176.
Madam President, I would move that Fund 1176, that we approve the Highway Department for the estimated, the attorney fees that we're starting to incur.
Second.
I have a motion in place from Councilman Basham, second from Councilman Murray. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning. I am not Stu Klein. He is welcoming another grandchild at any time, so, yes. The professional service is legal, that's for litigation related to land acquisition. And the second request is for Community Crossings Matching Fund Grant that will perform work along the Ninth Street, North Ninth Street corridor at the Burnett Road intersection.
Any questions, comments on the Fund 1176, legal fees? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Community Crossing.
Madam President, I move that we, that was explained by Commissioner Murtaugh, the request for a grant appropriation of $1.5 million.
Second.
I have a motion in place, Councilman Basham, second, Councilman Murray. Thank you, Tom, for already explaining that. Any comments or questions about this particular one before we vote? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Health Department Donation Fund.
Make a motion, we approve the Health Department Donation Fund 4118 appropriation in the amount of $250.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson. Good morning.
Good morning. This is for a community baby shower that's going to happen at the fairgrounds on May 6th from 10 to 2. Everybody's welcome to come see it. Then I think I have more on there.
How many of the baby showers do you have a year?
We just have one, but in the past five years, this went from five attendees, and now she has over 118 registered. So yeah, it's definitely grown.
The need is there, definitely.
That's great.
May 6th, from 10 to 2?
Mm-hmm, at the fairgrounds.
Stacy, did you have to register to be able to attend?
You don't have to, but some of our attendees have language barriers. We would try to be, we would really strongly recommend it so we can meet your needs. So we've partnered with Globo to make sure we have proper translators to help you go around and make sure that we have, all attendees either get a car seat or a mattress, and I think we might even be doing rain checks to make sure that we can meet the needs of all of the moms-to-be in the county. So yeah, we'll take a walk-in if we need to, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. STD Prevention Grant Fund.
Make a motion, we approve the STD Prevention Grant Fund 8463 grant appropriation in the amount of $181,768.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson.
This is to help support and fund three disease intervention specialists who actually oversee five other counties. We're a district hub here. So those are their supplies, community outreach, and actually their daily operations, so.
Did you say five other counties?
Over five, actually.
Over five, okay. Thank you.
Just depends where the cases take us.
Any questions or comments from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Gateway to Hope.
Make a motion, we approve Gateway to Hope Counseling Fund 9178 grant appropriation in the amount of $19,000.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson.
This is for our peer support program. Actually, our harm reduction site manager just got her certification within the past 30 days, so she's sending her sidekick through it as well, so this is to pay for that. And then supplies is for naloxone boxes, and then us for Narcan to house those, which we're getting those out even more in the community.
Any comments, questions from council?
What does GTH stand for on the appropriation?
Gateway to Hope.
Oh, okay, cool. Thanks.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, one more, Stacy. Salary statement.
Make a motion, we approve the salary statement for new position of medical assistant, COMOP 2, as presented.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson. Discussion.
This is pass-through WIS on 3/7, passed Personnel Committee on 3/12, went to the Commissioners on 3/17, and this is to take a Health First Indiana-funded nursing position and put it to a medical assistant position, the needs in the community where you're going to get more candidates of an MA than you do a nurse.
Any questions or comments from council?
And again, Stacy went through the process step by step, and it passed each step.
And they are eliminating a position as well, so it's not necessarily an addition of a personnel, there's elimination of a position as well.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Sheriff Firearms Training.
Make a motion for the Appropriations Firearms Training Fund 1176 appropriation in the amount of $450.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. How's everybody doing? What this is, we've always had in place a policy and ordinance that if an officer does 20 years with our office and they retire, they receive their firearm as a token of appreciation, a gift. What I did, working with the Commissioners and Doug, is write an ordinance that extends that to those that have retired from other agencies and then come onboard with us. Historically, we have them at the courthouse, civil process, and it used to be transport, but it's not as much anymore. But giving those same, that same benefit to those that retired, say, at Lafayette Police Department, and they did, say they did 15 years there, and they come over here and they do five with us, a total of 20, they have the option to buy their firearm if they wish. They then go through the paperwork and the transition through a local gun shop, they purchase the gun with their, they write us a check for fair market value, which in this case was $450, it'll go into the general fund. We'll come back and ask for that money, we'll go buy another gun. It's just, it's a way for them, those, I've learned over the years, the badge and the gun are very sentimental to police officers. So that is what this $450 is for.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from council?
You sure, Ben?
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Auditor Drug-Free Community Fund 1148.
Madam President, I request for appropriation from the Auditor's Office for a total sum of $186,731 for the purpose of grants and community support.
Second.
I have a motion in place from Councilman Basham, second from Councilman Carson. Discussion.
I don't have much to add, other than this is just a pass-through grant. We accept the funds and distribute them out.
Any questions from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, any committee reports? Unfinished business? New business? Commissioner FYI. Commissioner Byers.
I think most of you looked at what the state legislators or what they're potentially doing on tax reform and type of exchanges, Senate Bill 1, isn't it? Yeah, Senate Bill 1 just got passed out of committee. It's, looks like they're going to be voting on it come Thursday. Please get ahold of our state legislators. As it currently will be, if it passes, we will lose 1.5 million year 1, 3 million year 2, and 4.5 million year 3. So add that, add to what you just saw about our insurance, there's going to be some changes, plain and simple. I know we're meeting, talking about our insurance system and our, we are looking at nobody not getting hurt in some way, shape, or form, and I hate saying it that way, but we might as well be upfront and let everybody know. but we might as well be upfront and let everybody know that some changes are coming. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you want some joy in your life, tap for tap is this Saturday at the top of the parking garage, so have a beer.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, public comment. Dee, I think you have someone to introduce.
I do. Good morning, everyone. This morning I get to introduce William Walls. And William is going to be joining our team as a career and college readiness facilitator. He is, his position is being funded through the Next Chapter project through Indiana 4H. He's going to be working part-time through this position year-round. But then in mid-May, he's going to also take on some internship roles for us. So he'll work full-time for us during our really crazy busy time. And so we're just really excited to have him join us. So I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, y'all. Like Dee said, my name is William, but feel free to call me Will. Reason I came up here was I got my master's in agricultural economics, which I graduated last August of 2024. And before that, I got my bachelor's from Oklahoma State. Pretty much the whole focus of this summer and working as the Next Chapter facilitator will be to show how agriculture, or to be to educate students on how agriculture makes the athletics industry happen. So I'm kind of doing some new educational programming called Ag2Athletics that's kind of highlights lots of agricultural careers and industries that students might not think about are included in the athletics or sports world. Thank you.
Very cool. Thank you, well, welcome, Will.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments?
Madam President, I'd like to speak as John Q. Public. I have a question for the treasurer. I noticed the interest rates, and I watch interest rates all the time. Is there a minimal balance you have to have to, or is that a rolling average? Because four and a quarter is about tops around here, and I see there's like 4.58 and 586. Do you have to have a certain minimal balance to get that rate? What's, what is that balance? How much?
A primary bank, 20 million.
20 million?
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, next meeting's May 13th. Call for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, thank you, everybody.